Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Couple announcements. An advisory from the Mass Department of Public Health has been issued for all non-vaccinated and fully vaccinated people to wear a mask in public indoor seating in areas of substantial or high transmission. Shrewsbury in Worcester County has been categorized as a high level of community transmission for over a month. Therefore, we require that all employees and visitors in all municipal buildings wear a face mask. Exemptions from the mask requirements include those with a medical or other eligible condition. In addition, we ask all those attending the meeting to practice social distancing, leaving space between yourself and other non-related parties also attending the meeting. The board members here tonight will also be masked and practicing social distancing through their seating arrangements. When speaking, we do ask that your face mask remain on. Thank you. First order of business is to sign a few bills that we have. Can I get a motion to approve a bill to the Worcester Telegram and Gazette from September 27th, 2021 for legal notices in the amount of $238?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Second, Worcester Telegram and Gazette charge from May 24th, 2021 for legal notices in the amount of $700. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Third is to WB Mason for nameplates to the tune of nine, I'm sorry, $9.92.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, WB Mason for office supplies for $27.68.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next item on our agenda is to review and approve minutes from the September 27th, 2021 hearing.
Motion to approve minutes for September 21st, 2021?
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next, can I get a motion to approve minutes from the October 14th, 2021 meeting?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Our second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. There we go, Peter. All right. We're going to open up our meeting, our first meeting of the evening, 6:30 meeting, to hear the appeal of Luciana Bagnami, 251 Davis Street, Northborough, for a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under Section 4B to expand the second story to increase living space on an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling upon property located at 19 Worthington Ave. in the residence B2 district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 437000. I ask the appellant to, if the appellant is here, to please step forward, if you don't mind. Yep, you can sit right on down and if you could just let us know, introduce yourself by name, please, and let us know what you-
My name is Luciana Bagnami. I'm a contractor for the homeowner, Mr. Mercolin, and we are looking to, we are requesting a special permit to be able to increase living space on the second floor of this house located on 19 Worthington Avenue. The dimensions, the outside dimension of the house will not change. We're just looking to raise the roof so the second floor will have a little bit more living space.
Let's chat with board members on thoughts, questions, comments. Lisa, you want to start with you?
I am looking for the plot plan, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes. I realize that it is not where it normally would be filed, so please navigate to your emailed application folder within the Google Drive-
Thank you.
And the plot plan will be at the end of the application, so my apologies for that.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I will just add that it is non-conforming due to side yard and rear yard setbacks.
Great. Thank you.
Hold on one second.
Peter, do you want to go first?
Sure. So I actually don't really have anything, I think, where it's not changing the footprint at all. I don't think I have an issue with it.
Okay. Lisa?
Yes, I just verified that too. So none of the setbacks are changing. You're doing this addition within the existing footprint-
That is correct.
And you're only before us because it's an existing non-conforming structure-
Yep.
And I have no issues.
Great.
I am good with that also.
Thank you, Mr. Fulon.
Me too.
Great. And I agree with it as well. So thank you. Ms. McAllister, any further information we should take into consideration?
Not.
Okay.
Time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, no public feedback. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve a special permit to expand the second story to increase living space?
Motion to approve special permit to Section 4B to expand the second story to increase living space at 19 Worthington Ave. in Residence B2.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Next order of business is to hear the appeal of John Meter, 50, North Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under Section 4B to construct a second story to increase living space on a non-conforming, single-family dwelling upon property located at 120 Boylston Circle in the Residence A District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 10, Plot 000013. Welcome. State your name for the record, please.
John Meter, with Don Peg, the owner, looking for the special permit for similar reasons as before. All we're doing with this property is increasing the pitch-
Yes.
-of the roof to create more space and better living space on the second floor. We're not changing the footprint at all.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah. Just did it.
And so, sorry.
Peter?
I didn't mean to jump right to the front. So just raising the pitch of the roof, in other words, the front of the house won't even really look any different except-
It's actually going to be improved. We're going to add doghouse dormers to the front. We do have some pictures if you guys want to see them.
Oh, yeah, if you give them to us, we have to keep them. That's the only rule.
No, we can keep them.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
I made many copies.
Okay, there you go. We like prepared paperwork.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First page is the front existing, and page three would be the proposed front.
Yep.
Very nice.
Makes sense.
Big improvement.
Yes. Should have been there all along.
Yeah. Make it into a true Kate.
Peter, any questions today?
Looks great.
Lisa?
No issues.
Patrick?
I like the pitches. I think it looks good.
Anne?
Looks great.
Great. Thank you. I agree. Ms. McAllister?
Nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Being that there is no one, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion to approve a special permit to expand the second story to increase living space?
Motion to approve special permit, Section 4B, to construct a second story to increase living space at 120 Boylston Circle in the Residence A District.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to put that in there?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Next on our agenda, to hear the appeal of Alex DeVivo, 14 Appaloosa Drive, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a variance to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under Section 7C to construct a pool 10 feet from the side yard setback on an existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling upon property located at 14 Appaloosa Drive in the Rural B District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 43, Plot 011026. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, hi. Alex DeVivo.
Hello, Alex. What do you have in mind?
So basically, I'm asking for the 10-foot side yard setback because it's the only area on the property, just due to the topography, that I could actually install the pool. There's a very steep hill that actually runs off down to an area with boulders, and then on the other side of the property, basically anywhere else on the property would put it right on top of the house and not meet the 10-foot setback off the house. So this is the only area. I have some pictures that I can share. I only have one set, but I'd be happy to pass those around so you could see what I'm dealing with. But basically, asking for the relief for that reason.
Is the set that you have with you something you're willing to-
Oh, yeah, you guys, I only have one set, but you're-
That's okay. If you want to bring it up here, we can take a look at it.
I took four images of like the entire backyard or something. Want to see?
Great. Ms. McAllister, while we're looking-
Yeah, so I'll just reiterate first, the zoning of it is that an Ingram pool like this does have to meet the side yard setbacks in this district, which is 30 feet. The appellant is correct. It must also be 10 feet from the house. And then the topography, of course, would affect the placement of that pool. This one, although, is a nice drawing. It is not, excuse me, it is not a certified plot plan, so you will have to vote to accept or deny the waiver request that was in addition to this application. And when staff reviewed, specifically the zoning enforcement officer, she flagged it as potentially needing, or she recommends a condition be added to the decision to request an as-built plan once the pool has been completed. And so, this is informed by a number of things she's seeing in the field, so to speak, and a number of different enforcement issues she's come across. So she is recommending that, again, as-built plans be a condition of your decision to ensure that the pool is constructed in the manner in which it is approved by the board, and it also helps her for enforcement issues moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
So the, I just have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The silly tricky part is if we don't have a certified plot plan that we're voting on, how will the as-built plan be used to compare as to whether what was built matches what we approved?
So I would intend to write the decision, if it passes, that it can be no more than, excuse me, no less than 10 feet.
Yeah.
So, and that, that's not terribly unusual, but it would be that the, it would, the as-built plan would be submitted in the building permit before the final inspection is done, and the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, would review it at that time.
Okay. Okay.
If I may interject too, I've spoken with the land surveyor who actually did all the plot planning in the entire subdivision for my neighborhood. So I told him that I had a concern, quite honestly, having the pool installed and not knowing that if it met the setback requirements, and then having a pool in the ground that, you know, didn't meet the requirement. So what I intend to do is I intend to have them come out and stake it in the spring, because this is likely to be an April project for me, should it be approved. So they're going to come out and stake it and do a surveying, and then he's going to provide me with the as-built, you know, once it's complete.
Okay. Any other questions?
For me? Well, yeah, if we're going to switch to that. So I agree, knowing the sort of topography here, that you'd meet the requirements for variance, you know, soil-shaped topography of the land. I think clearly puts a hardship here. I think the only concern I have, especially if you're not planning on going ahead until April, is it seems we could avoid some of the issues by getting a certified plot plan ahead of time that identifies exactly where the pool is going to be, and then have the as-built so that the comparison can be direct. I think if you were planning to break ground immediately, I'd say, well, fine, we can waive it, but with so much lead time, it seems like it wouldn't pose much of an issue to get a plan done ahead of time, and it might just save you some-
Yeah. I was, I mean, quite honestly, I was trying to avoid the cost, because it will be costly to have them come out and do that.
Yeah, it's just that it's a requirement for everybody.
Yeah.
And it doesn't sound like there's any particular reason other than that you'd like to avoid the cost why you couldn't do it, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, everybody would like to avoid the cost.
Yeah.
And it doesn't sound like you're imminently breaking ground, so that's just where I'm sort of thinking right now in terms of the plot plan issue.
Mm-hmm. Lisa?
Yes, so I'd agree, the plot plan is needed, I think, for this decision. I differ, in my opinion, regarding the hardship. I think I personally need a little bit more to consider the topography a hardship here. I see from the photos, there's a slope. I don't know how much of a slope that is, but I know others construct pools on slopes-
Yeah.
-with retaining walls and whatnot, and others even remove decks to have a pool within the setbacks. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about why that's a hardship.
Yeah, so there's another issue that I actually wasn't made aware of until, I think, last week when I had kind of heard from the town regarding sort of what to expect. There's vegetated wetlands that run through the back of my property, and I spoke with the conservation agent, Brad Stone, today a little bit about sort of what to expect and what type of filing that I'd have to make with regards to that. And he had informed me, as long as I stay outside 50 feet of the buffer zone, that I would be fine, but if I was to go down that hill, I'm going to likely encroach on that. I will be inside the 100-foot buffer zone, which is, I guess, what the issue is. But he said, as long as I stay, you know, between 50 and 100 feet, I'd be okay. But I think the way that the pool's going to be on the plot plan, I'm going to be inside that 100 as it is, just going, you know, where it would be in the backyard.
So I see in the plot plan, it's pretty close to that buffer in what you're proposing. What I'm suggesting, and which other homeowners have done, is they, their pools are closer to the house, so they're just 10 feet away from the house, for example. So can you talk about why you wouldn't be able to do that?
I mean, basically, where they're putting it, there's not much room off of the 10 feet.
It is 10 feet.
It is 10.
The corner of the house, like-
So I would say same distance from the back of the house, but within the 30-yard set, the 30-foot setback.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing it, I'm sorry. So the pool would go, I get, where's north? There's no, there's north.
You're suggesting-
Yeah, so if the pool were moved north, northeast, yes, let's say, if the deck weren't there.
If the deck wasn't there, I still think I'd be running into issues with being too close to the house, or, I mean, the pool would be, have to be so small that, you know, it would make the project not even, you know, worth it to us.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick?
I will agree with Peter on the plot plan, but I also think, you know, we don't get much swimming time around here, but if you really want a pool, if the Davises don't have a problem with it, I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. Anne?
I share Ms. Cassette's concerns.
So I see it as, I think the topography is definitely a hardship, and I see that that's, that backyard goes way down.
Yes.
Yeah. I just don't see that there's a whole lot of other places to put it without really reconfiguring that backyard. So I do see a hardship myself, so. Well, it's a public hearing, so let's-
Can I see the photos again?
Yep.
I'd just add, I guess, so I think it sounds a bit like there might be something like a majority on the plot plan issue.
Mm-hmm.
So the applicant might consider continuing to the next meeting to get a plot plan, and you'd have another bite at the apple in terms of presenting your evidence as far as the variance and whether there's truly a hardship in terms of the topography. If it goes to a vote, you might not have the votes to get a variance from what it sounds like folks are saying.
Yeah, I think having better visuals is going to really be helpful in this decision, especially since you're asking for a variance.
Okay.
So I would share Peter's opinion that perhaps considering a continuation of the hearing might be in your best interest.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to-
Well, maybe public, oh, I'm sorry.
Public comment? Do we have, anyone wishes to be heard in the audience? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
If, if the appellant would like to continue, we could vote to continue the hearing if the appellant so chooses.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of waffling back and forth here. I mean, the issue that I have is that I tried getting this on the September agenda because I have to return the contract to the pool contractor to lock in the pricing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I'm concerned, I actually owe him the contract back by November 1st, but I also, you know, I guess don't want to be, I guess my question would be, so if it was voted no, what does that mean? Then I have to reapply and pay the fee again to come back, or?
Can't come back, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
I know all this.
Ms. McAllister?
So the process for it would be that you'd have to come back with a, if you did come back, you'd have to come back with a substantially different plan, that the board would then have to approve and vote that it is substantially different than the one they saw here.
Okay.
It would be, there'd be a handful of additional steps. You'd have to go to the planning board as well for their review and approval, just based on whether it was a substantial change or not, and then the board could vote again on the, on the plans, but it is definitely a more difficult process if they do deny it.
Okay.
We're, I think, trying to get you to a positive outcome here.
Okay.
So I would echo Peter's suggestion on a continuation, but that's up to you.
Okay, yeah, we can continue with them.
Okay. Can I get a motion to continue, please?
Motion to continue the hearing for 14 Appaloosa Drive to construct a pool 10 feet from the side yard setback.
Can I get a second?
We need to-
Continue to, yep, so if you don't mind me, I just want to confirm-
November 29th.
Oh, the date and the time.
Yep. At 6:30, November 29th. Okay. See the motion.
As stated.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
See you next month. We're going to have to-
Yeah.
Figure that out. Okay.
You don't have to do anything.
I think, voice vote.
Next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Colton Land LLC, 40 Southbridge Street, number 250, Worcester, Mass, for a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under Section 4B and Section 7D to continue use for retail and/or office with non-conforming parking requirements upon property located at 256 Boston Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass. In the limited business district, the subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 608000. Can I ask the appellant to step forward and state your name for the record, please? How much is state your name?
Well, my name is James Sofin. I'm the manager of Colton Land LLC, the owner of the property at 256 Boston Turnpike Road. We're here to apply for a special permit to allow us to use the property for both retail and business use, office use. The permit is for non-conforming parking requirements in the limited business zone. I would like to point out the property has recently been used for retail space, and our immediate use for it is office space. We're a small management company. It's myself and my assistant here. We'd like the board to, again, issue the permit for both retail and business use so that we don't have, if we do change use somewhere down the road, we don't have to come back here again. Presently, the site has three parking spaces, which, which is not, is not conforming according to today's requirement. That's basically everything we have to say here, so we'd like the board to allow us to use it for, for office space.
Ms. McAllister, background?
Yep, I would just clarify that they ask is to, that the use is by right, but the parking is what is non-conforming. So both retail and office use require about 10 spaces each, and as Mr. Sofin said, three is provided in the existing plan that you see in your file. And in accordance with Section 4B, any non-conforming use, in this case would be parking, can only be changed with similar or less restricted use. So in the, in the purchase of this new property, it underwent zoning review, and that's why they're before you today.
Okay. Mr. Mulcahy, you want to start?
Sure. So, you know, there's, it'll be a third as many spaces as is required. It sounds like in the immediate future, that's not an issue if it's just your company, which is just a few people. Do you have any near-term plans as far as the retail, which I could conceive of requiring, I mean, it requires the same number of spaces, 10, but depending on what you'd be doing in a retail place, you might need more than three spaces? I guess my question is, how long are you planning on using it as an office? Do you have any plans to convert it to retail right away?
No, no, we're going to use it for an office as long as we're in business.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not sure if it does, I don't know if it makes a difference, but he has the property next to it, where if you look at the plans, it shows the, the other property with the, they have like extra parking.
That 258?
258, between 258 and 262.
Yeah.
You know, so eventually, if he were to rent out a space to another type of, like, because our office won't take that whole space, if he converts another office or, and rents that out, then their parking would be allowed, you know, probably leased into, built into the lease that they could park between those properties.
So you also own 258? Oh, okay, I didn't realize that. Okay.
Madam Chair?
And 262.
I would just add that we did, we did ask the appellant that each property, and I think the understanding is property they own has to be taken individually with parking considerations. If they did want to do a parking plan, they would have to meet certain guidelines for lighting and egress and everything like that. So that's not being done, a full site plan is not-
Okay, so that's further down the road.
Yeah, so right now, we would just have to take 256 by itself.
By itself?
Yeah.
On its own value? Okay. Peter?
I guess my inclination is if it was going to be used as office for now, and just your office and just a few cars, that we would just approve that and leave retail for when there is a retail use, but I don't feel super strongly about that, so I'd like to hear what everyone else on the board thinks.
Ms. Cassette?
I'm in a position to approve, but I too would like to hear from other board members and public comment.
Okay. Mr. Fulon?
Well, where it says to continue use for retail and office, so what is, what has been going on there? Like, is it this-
The flag store was there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, there was a retail space that they saw flags. It was hard to miss coming up who night.
A flag, I think it was called.
Yeah.
All-American flag.
So it was retail. It's now office, but could be both.
So it was retail, it's now office, but could be both.
Well, you said it'd just going to be office space.
What's that, sorry?
We're just going to be office space, but we're, we're not going to need that whole, it's just the two of us, a property management company.
Well, we're not going to use it for office space, but we, we have need for storage space. So right now, we're gonna, only part of that space will be, well, probably three quarters of it, and then the rest will be storage for now.
And eventually, if it's, you know, if when, if we get the building permit and stuff like that, and we build out another office space, we would rent that out.
So there could be another tenant, and it could be retail or office.
Right.
Because of this use.
Well, this is, this was actually subject, suggested by both our architect, but, and the town planner to ask for a special permit that would cover both, like I, like I made my statement.
Didn't have to come back.
We don't have to come back here. Right now, it's retail, and it's non-conforming. So we could rent, I'm assuming, we could continue as retail, non-conforming, but we want an office. We don't want to have to keep coming back and forth. That's why we're asking for the permit to cover both uses.
And to clarify, you, you said it'd be primarily used for storage? Storage of what, if you might my asking?
I'm sorry, what is it?
Storage, he asked about the storage.
Oh, no, 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 she's saying we're not going to use the whole space for our offices. There's just two of us, it's 2,700 square feet.
Yeah.
The rest was just, I mean, right now, we're just planning to use for storage. If, if we decide to rent that out, that, we could conceivably have another office next, you know, in, within that space.
Right.
Shared office.
Yeah. I guess then you'd be running up against a difficulty with the three spaces, I suppose.
There is a letter in Exhibit C from, email from the architect describing the space and uses, and the parking spaces that would be required. The last statement he makes is this would likely be three or four spaces, so the parking requirements are very similar to what is there today.
Patrick, did you have more comments, questions?
Well, the, the letter that Lisa was just referring to, I'm, I'm just trying to look at that now again, and then.
Yep. I'm gonna let you look. Ann?
Yes. Mr. Sofin, is this going to be your office, your company's office?
Yes.
Is that the intent?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's the only question I have.
I am just curious about the other parcels. I mean, future plans, do you think at some point you'll merge them all? I'm just curious about that. Or for the time being, you're gonna keep what was, is there, and just use that as your office?
Yes.
With the three parking spaces. So that's really what's in front of us right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, great. This is a public hearing, so would I ask if anyone would like to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close a public hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Might I get a motion to approve the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading off the wrong thing. So can I get?
Madam Chair, is, may I ask if there's any discussion that needs to be done? Anything anyone else wants to add? Are you fine?
I think it's, I think it's probably fine. If it was, I mean, I know the flag store was there with just the three spots. It sounds like it's mostly going to be their own office, and so it might not need more than three spots. You can imagine if they rent out a portion of the building to another tenant, the parking might become an issue, or if there's retail, parking might become an issue, but maybe we cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
I agree. Okay. Motion to approve special permit for Section, Section 4B and Section 7D to continue use for retail and/or office with non-conforming parking requirements. Do you need me to?
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I am just realizing I should have said that there is also a waiver request.
Okay.
If, before you make that motion, if you could have.
Look at that.
I missed it.
That is my mistake. So the, the site plan was, that was provided with the parking plan is not, it's a architect, but not a certified land surveyor plan.
My understanding that nothing's changing though about the layout, right?
No.
Okay, so.
It's, yeah.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Okay, so let's first make, let's, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver request of a detailed plot plan, plot plan, sorry, for 256 Boston Turnpike in the limited business district. I can't talk today.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And now I make a, a motion to approve the special permit, Section 4B and Section 7D to continue use for retail and/or office with non-conforming parking requirements for 256 Boston Turnpike in the limited business district.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's get a waiver on that. Okay. Next hearing is to hear the appeal of J E K N LLC, 60 Edro Island, Westminster, Mass. for four variances from the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 7L to construct a common driveway over the maximum grade, over the maximum length, within 100 feet from the center line of intersection, and which exceeds the requirements for post-development runoff upon properties located at 171, 173, and 191 South Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. in the resident A District. The subject premise are described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 29, Plot 064001, Tax Plate 29, Plot 064009, and Tax Plate 29, Plot 064008, respectively. Can I ask you to state your name for the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, respectfully, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm here representing the appellant, who I expected here, but for some reason isn't, but I would ask you to take me in that stead. This is a request for various variances related to the properties down on South Street, which is depicted on this, this plan here. I'm not sure, can everybody see this? I think you also have it in your, your files. The proposal is to, is to avoid this, which is the present plan. And this shows you three driveways coming out of the South Street at the same location. That plan was at the engineering department. This is an approved plan. It, it, it will be built if they have to, but as you may see from your file, there's the engineering department asked us to make these requests. It makes sense. The topography of this site goes from 114 feet down at the, down at the street level, above sea level, to 190 feet at the second house up here, right here, where, where this is where the common drive ends, because this is just a single driveway up to the, up to the final house. So basically, the request is to bring it down to one driveway, joining here, the three houses up above, and then coming down in one driveway down to the location on South Street. I would also note, I think in your file, there's also comments from the fire department, that they also are recommending this for various fire department reasons. I spoke with Andy Truman today, who's our town engineer, and he told me that I could feel free to say that he strongly recommends this, this proposal. The fact is that this site has obvious topographical concerns. You've got a 50 or 60-foot drop from top to bottom, and a very short space, the shape of the lots, which I don't know if these lots would be approvable today under our present zoning, but they were at the time they were, that they were developed, so we have what we have, and they, I think they would be approved, but it's still with the topography, it doesn't work. You combine the shape of the lots and, and the topography of the hill coming down, and you clearly have the hardship. When you put that much pavement of three driveways on a hillside like that, you have stormwater considerations coming down off the hill, you have impervious area considerations that are a big concern in town right now. You have maintenance issues, which can be better addressed with a common driveway, and you have confusion issues with three driveways at one particular spot with perhaps three little signs right at the end of each driveway, who knows? I would suggest to you, this is clearly incidental to this one lot, to this one parcel of land. And the request that's before you is not, I would suggest, a derogation of the bylaw, because the common drives are intended to, to solve a problem like this, and that's what our bylaw is for. I understand that it is longer than usual, but you have a lot configuration and a shape configuration that, that really dictates that, and I, I would suggest for all the above reasons, the traffic flow issues, the directional confusion issue that undoubtedly would occur with three driveways opening up right, right at that location, the dressing stormwater runoff, which now we are, we are asking to withdraw that particular variance, so we're actually down to three. We would withdraw the one on the stormwater 100-year runoff request. So I'm requesting that withdrawal, and if you needed something in writing, I'd be happy to present it to Rowan tomorrow if you need it. And, and obviously the, the amount of pavement involved in this, I mean, you've got three times, almost three times the pavement, you've got three times the impervious area. It's better all around, I would suggest to you respectfully, to have this common drive. And honestly, we wouldn't be before you asking for it unless the town engineering department asked us to. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister?
I think Attorney Richard did an excellent job in summing up the town's perspective. You'll see comment letters from both the fire department, or comments from the fire department, and then a letter from engineering, both in support of this new plan. I would just add that, again, our zoning enforcement officer recommends the condition be included. If you approve this plan, that a final ASBILT be submitted. This will be going before the planning board as well, and receiving.
And ASBILTS are required under that process.
Exactly. So we're, we're just asking that the zoning board also receive a copy of the ASBILT at the time that you submit to the planning board. So it's a, a very, hopefully, very small ask, but one that would make sure that the zoning board has the final approved plan by the town in our files.
And that's fine with us, obviously, that's fine with us. I mean, we, if you were to approve this, then we would then apply to the planning board for their approval under the common drive by law. So, and that's, that's one of their main requirements that never waived, is that they get a, an ASBILT. So you'd get the same ASBILT.
Okay. Peter?
So just a clarification question. By withdrawing that fourth request for variance, is that, so the thought then is that the development would comply with the excess?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so in that case, I mean, that was frankly my only concern. I, I know this area well, having grown up on Lamplighter Drive, and I know it's a very steep spot, and there simply is not space for three driveways, and if you were to have them, I think you'd have a waterfall, basically, and a serious rain event. So I think this makes a lot of sense, and have, I have no issues with it. Oh, and I'll just say for the record, the hill is very steep, and I think it clearly complies with the terrain aspect of a variance hardship, so.
Thank you. Lisa?
I, I just, I wish the developer were here. I just think it's ridiculous that three houses were built there on that slope. I know that has nothing to do with this variance, and you have to provide access to those three houses that exist today, and this is the safest option that you're presenting to us, but I just, I don't know how this development occurred in the first place. I know at the time, I think they were separate lots, not a subdivision, and it was allowed, so I'm just venting. Sorry.
I understand.
I'm totally venting, but I, this just gets me.
I understand, I understand. There used to be a.
Yeah, water under the bridge, exactly. So I, again, you've presented how this would be the safer alternative, and we've heard enough evidence from our fire department to support that, but I just had to say how unpleasant it's, it's been the development over there. But that's it for me.
Thank you.
Had to make a comment.
Yep. Patrick?
I'd just hate to be the first guy up in the morning when it snows. Who's in charge of that?
I agree. Work from home.
Love your neighbors.
Right.
Got it.
Anything else?
That, that's almost it.
Okay, yeah?
I agree with Mr. Mulcahy and Ms. Cosette, but I have this question, Mr. Ricker.
Sure.
Are there easements that need to be obtained, or has that already been ironed out?
It's already ironed out.
Okay.
It's, they're, they're already in place.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the plan shows the accurate location.
Okay, great.
And I would say, this makes, this makes such sense to just combine it all. To me, it's a safety consideration. Having curb cuts for three driveways would just not work well, so, and I, I think we do have to take into consideration Chief Ona's comments, and our town engineer, Andy Truman, are all in support of this, so I'm in support as well. So, given that this is a public hearing, I'd like to ask for any public commentary. If anyone out there would like to be heard on this matter, please, if you could step over to the far right, right, and right, identify yourself, please. Name and address would be great.
Sure. Greetings to you all. My name is Prop. Knoll, and I live on 177 South Street, which is a property right aligned with the driveway that is getting built. So we are in favor of the proposed driveway right now. It is parallelly running against a steep slope of my property, and the downpour of the waterfall that you guys are talking about, it is going to impact me if it's built in three different driveways. And so therefore, having a common driveway will provide enough space between my property and the driveway to create more safety precautions for my, myself. And one of the concerns that we do have is having some lighting fixtures around the driveway, especially at nighttime. It's too dark to even look out my window in the backyard. And another will be a great, have a great transparency on the developer's plan and providing some sort of barrier to the properties that are physically parallel running along the driveway. Right now, there is no bare physical barriers right now, but in the longer term, how winters go around here, there could be some vehicles running down the road when there's heavy snow or heavy rain. So these are some concerns that I wanted to address, and that is all.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Sir?
My name is Jothi Silverage. I'm the one, you know, wake up in the morning in the winter.
Could you give us your address, please?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm the one wake up in the morning in the winter. When there's a heavy snow, I'm not going to come down, because I live in one of the property in 191 South Street.
Your 191.
Yeah. So if I have to drive car during the winter, or, you know, black eyes, I have to land in their house, probably. So I, I really came here to requesting the approval of this common driveway. This actually takes care of everybody's problem. You know, not only myself, all the neighbors, I feel it's safe that, you know, especially, I have had a very bad experience in a black ice coming down the hill. Whatever, like, even you put a ton of salt, it's not going to stop. So this common driveway will have a lot of safety than having three driveways hanging in parallel. Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Sir?
Hello, Madam Chair and other members of the board. I'm, I'm from the same property, 177 South Street, what you spoke on. The only thing I want to add, so we bought this property, I think, a year ago. As she raised most of the concerns that we have, the only thing I want to understand is the variance of the stormwater that we are trying to exclude, because if, because mostly that, any water that comes downhill is going to come right onto our property. And if you see on this plan, this is our house, so right now, this is all open space, and with current, I don't, I don't know what they call, for constructions to stop the water flow over there.
Mm-hmm.
They have some barriers here for just temporary. I'm sure once the construction is done, they're going to remove that. So my only concern is how, if there is any plan that developers can share, if the water is not directly going to run on my property, because then if any mud water is going to the strong drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to be liable for that? So.
Yep.
Can I show that?
Attorney Ricker?
Maybe I can show you. Sure, thank you. This is the drainage plant, which shows a detention basin here, and the intent is to, that, that is, that actually is the enlarged detention basin from the first plan. You can't really tell it on your small plane, but it has been enlarged and, and has been depth added to it in order to deal with the 100-year storm event. I would point out to you that if there were three driv- I would point out to you that if there were three driveways coming down, there is no provision in the bylaws that requires you to deal with the stormwater that comes down the driveway. So this clearly-
Exactly.
Is way better for the neighbors.
Now, I'm all, again, just to reiterate, I think I support the board to have a common driveway. I think that's just a common sense at this point, given that three driveways will definitely cause this problem. I just want to know if these plans can be shared with us, just makes ourselves, all the neighbors comfortable, that we are not liable for the water. And again, we don't want to also be adding towards a storm, mismanagement, you know? We all want our head to compliance, but if something is not in our hand, then we'll be really in a difficult situation once this is all built. But I do support having a common driveway. That seems like the best option at this point.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great.
I'm going to give him my email address so that he can email me so that I can send them a copy of this plan.
Perfect.
Okay.
He'll get you over the plans.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard in this matter? Looks like we have one more.
Hi.
Nope.
My name is Anthony Yusef.
I'm sorry.
Anthony Yusef. And I live at 183 South Street, just right behind, just same issue. So pretty much they brought up all the problems that we could have there. But we definitely agree that there should be one driveway for those three houses. So I'm in support, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you. That is helpful. Appreciate people showing up to let us know how they feel.
Me too.
Very helpful.
That is very helpful.
Different than last time, I see.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Lisa?
The only issue raised by abutters that isn't in the plan is that of lighting. I would expect each homeowner to perhaps have a lamp post at the end of their driveway. But there is a long part of the common driveway that is right behind the abutter that mentioned the lighting. That is not well lit. Is there anything you would like to say about that, Mr. Rickert?
You know, I don't know. I don't know what the plan is there, you know?
I mean, that's beyond her view.
I think, though, that the planning board will address that.
Okay.
Because they require lighting plants. So, but I don't know what the plan is.
Okay.
I haven't seen any plan for that. And I don't think they're prepared to go to the planning board yet, so.
Richard, how about the discussion on landscaping along, behind 181, I believe?
That's a fairly steep slope, so it'll have to be stabilized. But I think it's a grass stabilization type of landscaping. It's a rocky hill, too.
Yeah, it's going to be hard to-
No matter what you plant there, you're not going to be able to dig down far, I mean, without blasting, so.
Well, the rock there will probably help to absorb a lot as it is.
The rock helps somewhat, but again, you've got a lot of impervious surface here. So I think that the detention area is going to do some good, and they have to bring in Phil in order to do the detention area. And I'm sure that that will be governed by also the building department as well as the planning board when it comes to stabilization of the slopes. They are very particular about that.
Yeah, for sure. All right, no further comments. Look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All moved.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I say something? You'll just have to vote to accept the withdrawal request that Attorney Rickert verbally submitted to you.
Okay.
Before voting on the motion.
Start with that. Can I get a motion to withdraw without prejudice? Section 7L to exceed requirements for post-
Development runoff.
Correct?
I make a motion as stated.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Not going to repeat that one.
Yeah, that was a good idea.
Okay. All right, so we have three variances in front of us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Madam Chair, I make, we'll see how this goes. I make a motion to approve three variances. Section 5L to construct a common driveway over the maximum grade, over the maximum length, within 100 feet from the center line of an intersection. With condition that, and I've lost that page, thank you, that after construction is completed and as-built- Sorry, after construction is completed, an as-built plan of the common driveway approved by the Planning and Engineering Department shall be provided to the board for 171, 173, and 191 South Street in the Residence A District.
Can I get a second?
Just amend the motion, section 7L, not 5L.
Oh, did I say five? I'm so sorry. Section 7L.
And then seconded.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you all. I hope to see you soon without masks.
Amen.
I don't know about that.
One of these days.
One of these years.
One of these, right, exactly. All right. Continuing right along. We've got some new business to cover here. First part of our new business is to review the zoning board meeting dates for 2022.
Does someone have? All right.
Do we not have that?
Do we have the 2022 meeting dates?
Can I bring through the men's room?
Oh, in the Google?
We'd have to take a recess. We can do that.
Yeah, we'd have to.
Oh, yeah.
Five-minute recess.
Okay, five-minute recess.
I move to make a five-minute recess.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Peter.